We're gonna start off with prayer and pledge. I'll be leading the prayer and the pledge tonight. Those that would like to participate, please do so. We'll bow our heads, most gracious ever the Father, we come to unite with decisions we have to make for the betterment of the city to move our city forward. We ask that you have a clear understanding, all of us have a clear understanding of what we have to do and to move forward for the betterment of the city. These things I ask in my name, Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting and the audience is asked to remain from, it's to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, and otherwise disrupting the meeting. I have some housekeeping to do, so I need for all of council to put those phones on vibrate, please, and also put your tablet on vibrate so it don't bing. Audience, I'm asking you to do the same thing. Please put your phone on silence so that we don't interrupt what we have at hand to do. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Lamire Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Your pro tem, Boss.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland is excused, Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present, one excused.
Okay, we did that. Do we have any announcements? Oh, I'm sorry. This is, the reason for this single, this single subject special meeting is for the purpose of consideration of the lead service line pipe replacement contract. Do we have any announcements?
I do not, Mayor, so that will take us to public input.
Welcome to, welcome to those who have come to sign up and address the audience, council tonight, I'm sorry. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you, what you have to say. You will be called to the podium by the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure you cover your main points. Again, I'm asking that everyone refrain from booing, clapping, and let's get through this. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is John Millen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, manager, and staff. My name is John Millen. I live at 508 West Remington Street. I usually come before you to speak as a private citizen to support, defend, or celebrate some proposal or event in this city. Tonight, I am here to talk to you as a former council member about the most embarrassing display of dysfunction in city government I have ever seen. After hearing from individuals present at the previous council meeting and reading news coverage of the events, I felt compelled to view the video record to see exactly what transpired. It was nothing, nothing less than a very public rebuke by this council of the work done by the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the city manager, and all the staff who labored preparing the lead service line replacement contract recommendation on that evening's agenda. From the Thursday before that meeting, when the agenda is published and distributed to council, members have four days to seek information, clarification, or conversation about an item from the manager by a simple email or phone call. The Public Works Director is available in the same manner with an appropriate notice to the manager. On the morning of the meeting, the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the manager, and senior staff meet for agenda review. Any problems with an item can be addressed, or an item can be removed from the agenda. No delay was requested. When the item was called out of consent for exception is where the problem began. Everything that should have happened over the past four days was attempted in ten minutes. I remind the council that the qualifications to bid on work are different than those to be awarded a contract for that work, as explained by Director Carwatt. Council failed to create the conditions for an open discussion of the item and appeared afraid to address the allegation of systemic racism leveled in the public input portion of that meeting. I take that personally. I spent four years seated where you are, and if there is systemic racism, then I would have to be a part of it. If any council member gives any credence to such a charge in his or her deliberations, then we have a bigger problem than one contract. The band Rush seems to speak to council in the words of their song, "Free Will." If you choose not to decide, you still have made a choice. Council has the opportunity to correct its lapse of judgment tonight. I hope you take it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Eric Ingles, Eggle, Eggleson. I'm sorry, Eric. Correct me, please.
To this honorable council, good afternoon to everyone in the audience. My name is Eric Eggleston. I'm at 1913 Amherst, which is in Saginaw, Michigan, for a 602. I came to you today when my brother, Phil Carwatt, reached out to me and asked me to say some words. One of the unique things about the position that I'm gonna take, and I wish the Browns was, was present here, is that Phil Carwatt is my brother, but the Browns are my contractor. I stand with my contractor, and I stand with my brother, and we have an opportunity to do something unique and amazing, and we got to give folks the tools that they need. So today, I'm going to offer my brother some tools to make sure that we have a bidding process that is not only fair, not only equitable for everybody, but it presents its own pipeline by making sure we train all of our bidders that come in this facility. For me, this is personal simply because YDC, we pride ourselves on doing the work, and as your brother, you're gonna have to disrupt the norm that has been going on for years and years. This is a simple fix. There's already federal language out here to guide us through this process, where we shouldn't even have to have conversations like this. If someone is disqualified, I'm okay with that, but when they're disqualified, we should then have a clear pathway to get them qualified, and programs such as 8A certifications get individuals qualified through training so they can get some set aside from the ones that you do decide is the contractor that's able to do the work. So when I heard all of some of the comments, I can say Phil Carwatt has not a racist bone in his body, and that's my brother. I can say the Browns have done well by YDC. Their work just got inspected yesterday, and it passed for the second time. So I want us to be able to work these things out, but have a clear pathway that has the process and the procedures. And in closing, YDC always bring to the table what everybody else should bring at the table, so it's just not talk. So Phil, publicly, publicly, as your brother, you gotta be a disruptor. You gotta put forth a program, a clear pathway, to get those to where they wanna be, as you sometimes have to reject them, and you're gonna have to present that to this board so they can make the decision. I love you, I respect you, also to the Browns, love you all, and I think we can have an opportunity to mend this for the future, so everybody win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maurice Hopgood.
Maurice Hopgood, address 5722 Barbary Lane, Saginaw Township. After looking at all the information like everyone else in the room, when I heard and I saw the events that's taking place, I just believe that it's a time now that we gotta quit using colors as barriers, and we gotta learn to work together. I trust that this city council knows to do what's right. All you have to do, right, is do what's right, and when I look at Phil Carwatt, one who was raised with me, and I was raised in him, far from all of those comments. I think a lot of times, it's sad to say, we like to pull cars when we feel like we at a disadvantage, but I believe that we have to unify the city, and I believe that whatever direction that this city council takes, along with Phil Carwatt's direction, I believe it'd be whole and best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Monty Brown.
I'm Mayor Moore, everyone here. I'd just like to say firstly that if you boo, or yay, or nay, I'm used to that, and that would make me feel more comfortable. That's, that's where I am with that, so you'd have to know my background, but anyway. I understand why we're here. As far as the reasons that I'm here, I'm here basically to give a credence and justification to an individual who I've known my whole life. I understand the situation. I sympathize with the Browns, as being a minority business owner myself. Let's take the elephant out of the room and tell the truth that a lot of situations, there is bias, there is prejudice in, in jobs and selections and things of that nature. I don't know the vetting process, the particular vetting process that occurred, but I tell you what I do know, I know that individual right there. As the two previous speakers said, we've known each other for years. We've grown up together. We've run around together. We've, we've not just knew him and then didn't know him, twenty years later, we talked, no, through every process, and I know that if this man said the vetting process was what it was, that's what it was. But as Eric said, also, we need to get those who are disqualified and what have you, help get them to qualifications. I'd like to say that as far as a person and a human being, this man who I can vouch for and speak for as an individual wears his heart on his sleeve, and he is who he says he is, and I stand by his word, and I hope that everyone can work together and we can rectify the situation. We all want to, especially myself, again, being a minority business owner. I know the struggles. I know you have to do twice as much to get half the results and what have you, but I will say this, as I would like to be judged on the content of my character, we all want that. We all want to be judged that way, and I do believe in all situations, this man judges people in that manner. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Kosky. Council, you do have a handout page, is the single page from Jim?
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting, allowing me to speak. I'm Jim Kosky. I live at 8673 Cottonwood Drive in Freeland. I just moved there, so I have to look and see where I live. I was elected several times. I was Saginaw County's Drain Commissioner. I was Saginaw County's Public Works Commissioner. I was a city com, or a county commissioner representing part of the city over the last thirty years, since I've retired. I got out of everything until I got a call from the Drain Commissioner in Flint asking me to serve on the, the Flint, the Flint Water Interagency Coordinating Committee that the governor had put together to work with the lead line replacements in Flint. Because of my experience and expertise in that, I have been doing this since 1961 in one form or another. I left it on, you know, on your desk, so, and I worked with all of the contractors in Flint. General McDaniels, who was the head of the lead line replacement thing, asked me to serve on his, with his staff to visit and work with all the contractors that were putting in the lead line replacements, which I did, and I spent a lot of time with all of them trying to help them and show them some of the things that I learned over the years and better ways to do it. And I'm here because of what I found with the Stevens Company. They were, they were nice people, but they were way, way over their heads. Yeah, and some of the things I found was the crews, they would wait for hours, sometimes for a piece of equipment that nobody had, they didn't have on the job, they had to wait till somebody brought them that. They would go and, they would do a job and get it almost done, but because they had to break concrete, they couldn't do that because that was somebody else's job, so they leave a job undone. They would leave holes open in the road and not barricaded, and in the yards and some things. We would have to go and get them to do all that stuff. Now, and some of the people would be spending long periods of time on their telephones and not paying attention to the job. Now, I spent a day with the manager from Stevens, trying to help him, to teach him some of the things that I had learned to try to help them where they would be better served, and they never asked me to do any of my advice, but they, they, well...
Motion to extend the speaker's time for a minute and a half.
Second. Thanks. It's been moved to second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed.
And then point of information, I'm sorry. Are you, do you mean the Stevens or the Browns?
Pardon?
Do you mean the Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. WT Stevens.
All right, thank you.
And I spent time with them, and, and...
Okay, are we continuing now?
Pardon?
Are we continuing now? Are you ready now to continue for your minute and a half?
Oh.
Okay, 'cause this is not a question and answer period, but he's referring to the contractor, Stevens.
Okay.
Through the Brown, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, Jim.
Okay. But they, they, they were just, there was no one that was trained. The people weren't trained, and the crew chiefs didn't have the people on there that could make decisions, and everything was made from one person or another person who wasn't on the job, they would have to come and do it. I just, and like I said, I was, I was involved with many contracts, and I did find that the lowest bid is not always your best deal, and if you have qualified, competent people to advise you, take their advice, because especially the people that I, that I know, Mr. Carwatt also, and I know he has nothing but the city's best interest in mind, so I would just, if I, if you have any questions, you know, I, I couldn't put it all down in three minutes. It's been a while since I've done this, so I'd be happy to answer any question you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Clark. Please wait for me to reset the timer.
Yes.
Thank you, Patricia. Go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Clark. I'm speaking tonight for Martha Brown, of Martha Brown Custom Builders LLC, who is attending a funeral out of town. Within the handouts you've received is the disqualification letters from the city of Saginaw, which gives the basis for the disqualification, which is a lack of experience, the necessary capital, materials, and equipment. To address the other items in the letter, which cannot be verified, and no facts, no representative in city of Flint were able to recommend Martha Brown because no current department head were employed or worked with Martha Brown Custom Builders. Martha Brown was bonded for the Flint project, any issues were taken care of. WT Stevens is a subcontractor who would not have a contract with the Saginaw City. Martha Brown Custom Builders has been engaged in water line replacement and underground work for the last past ten years. For experience, item two and three, reference letter from the Buena Vista Township contracted from 2013 to 2019 for six years. Letter provided from the city of Flint from 2018 and 19, of two years, for performing the same work that is in the bid. Item four, the resolution, resolution from the city of Flint, page two, description of the work that was performed in 2018 and 19. Item five, the permits from the city of Saginaw and the County Road Commission for the water line, sewer line, and the sub-line for the work that was performed within the last six months. Item six and seven, the bank statement verification and the real estate for the necessary capital to fund this project. Item eight, equipment necessary to perform this project, any other equipment, boring equipment which would be contracted with the professional subcontractor. And item nine, this project is to be performed within a three-year period, breaking the workload down to under 300 homes each year for a six-month-plus period each year. Item 10, the bid bond, the bid bond of the Saginaw, of city of Saginaw, which guarantees my performance and labor bond.
Motion to extend the speaker's time for a minute and a half.
Second.
Call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay.
Okay, Patricia, I'm ready.
All right. Martha Brown Custom Builders has been unfairly discredited, discredited, and needs the city of Saginaw to immediately retract all unsubstantiated slander and disqualification of Martha Brown Custom Builders. I would like to say that I've known Martha Brown for over twenty years, and her work is superb, and I know that she's very qualified to do this particular job, and one of the things I can say for Martha Brown is she has helped a lot of boys and girls engage in the work, helping them far as being successful. A lot of the minorities too, she's taken in and trained them, some of the trades that she knows, to help them, pull them off the street as well. So I recommend Martha Brown for this particular job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie Forbes. Give me a second to reset, Jamie.
Yep. Okay. Good evening. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, city manager, and staff. I would like to give credit to our incredible city staff for making sure that taxpayer dollars are always spent responsibly and fairly. A couple of years ago, based on a question from a neighbor, I inquired about the process for major, for the major rebuilding of Mackinac Street, and had the privilege to learn a lot more about the city process of awarding and ensuring quality work. The process that staff goes through to vet and learn more about the capabilities and experience of contractors applying for projects is extensive. The process they use to select contractors is defined and holistic. Even as the work is taking place, staff goes above and beyond to keep a close eye on the contractor to ensure that they are following safety guidelines and hitting the quality and longevity specifications required for the project. Based on my conversations with these employees then and since, I have full confidence in their process, dedication, and fairness. I know I am not alone when I say that I would like as many city contracts as possible to go to local, women, and minority-owned businesses that pay their staff a living wage, maintain a safe working environment, and do quality work. I hope we will all do our part at the tables that we sit at to support and help develop these businesses. This is one of the many reasons that I am proud to sit on the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation Board, where small businesses can receive support and resources to build and become successful. I'm confident that you all will come to a resolution on this situation, since you know better than anyone what this funding means to the city of Saginaw. And lastly, thank you for your service to our favorite city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brenda Beckham.
My name is Brenda Beckham, and I want to address the council, thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity, and to the mayor, to basically piggyback off of Ms. Forbes. My only question I had this evening is, are there a diversity that is being utilized for contractors here in the city of Saginaw to reflect the community that is diverse in itself? Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is John Stempel.
I don't think I've ever spent less than three minutes up here before, but good evening, Mayor, members of council, my former boss. Pleasure to be here tonight. My purpose here tonight is a couple things. One is to express my support for Mr. Carwatt and the, the quality of work that he does in, in doing what he does. The, the amount of knowledge and experience that guy has and the amount that he cares about what happens in the city is like none other that's been in that position since I was here for 27 years. I can guarantee you, there's no color of skin issues that crosses his mind when making those decisions. It's all about the facts. I've known Phil for 25 years, and he is one of the most thorough guys I know. The process to evaluate these bids, having worked here, like I said, it's extensive. It used to drive me nuts, 'cause I had to run it through so many different people to get things approved, Reggie, you know. Sorry, I should've said Councilman Williams. So y'all have to have some trust in the folks that you've hired to do these jobs. They put their heart and soul into it. Phil is, when he walks out the door, he's still working. He's hung up on me at I don't know how many times since I retired, 'cause he had to take a call for the city. You need to listen to him. He knows what he's doing. I'm not here to say anything bad about the Browns. They do, do quality residential work that I inspected some of myself. As a residential builder myself, I know what it takes to do a project. The project that is being contemplated here, it's a big project. It's a big project for anybody, and you need to have experience doing these big projects. There's a lot of work, a lot of, and not only that, you're, you're having to go into people's houses. This contractor that you hire is representing y'all. It's gonna be very difficult to manage doing work in these occupied houses to get this work done. It's, this is not a fun job for anybody. It's gonna take a huge amount of effort, huge amount of staff, huge amount of equipment, a huge amount of organization. The, and frankly, I, I do not personally believe that the Browns have that capacity at this point. I don't have a problem with them trying to work toward that, that point. It's great, everybody should have goals, but waking up one morning and, and becoming a full-time, four and a half million dollar project...
Motion to extend the speaker's time for a minute and a half.
Second.
Put about all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed.
Where, John?
This is, if this does go a certain way, it is an epic, recipe for disaster. The Browns will be in hardship. I can guarantee you the number of phone calls that you get related to this, I think you get a lot of phone calls about roads... you get a lot of phone calls about roads and dangerous buildings. You got a lot of people that are going to be mad because things aren't getting done in the time that they need to get done, and there will be problems. Mark my words. And if, I'll leave that alone. The simple fact that there's six million dollars between the two numbers should, should tell you something. There's no way you can do this project for four and a half million dollars. No way. I don't want to see the Browns getting in trouble that way. I mean, they worked a lot of years to, to build their business, and just be a good idea to, to make sure you have a qualified person that's doing this work. Eric also spoke to the, you know, teaching people and getting them qualified. Those types of things do happen here at the city. And I know you know an example of one, Councilman Balls. We have a demolition contractor that came to see me one day. I didn't know him. He walked in, he says, "I just got out of prison. I need a chance." Said, "Okay, what do you do?" "Well, why not tear down houses?" We gave him a chance. We got him trained, we provided training for his employees. He's a very successful business. He's done hundreds of demolitions for the city since, since then. I'd go on and on. Please make the right decision for my city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council. I want to remind you, it's a single-subject meeting.
Go do it. Council members, you also have three minutes, single-subject for tonight. You are to focus on the agenda item only. We will begin tonight with Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have to say it's very good to be back after a very rough month. However, I also want to say thank you to our public speakers for coming out tonight and for sharing and expressing, whether it's good or bad, the topic at hand of the lead replacement lines. I will say I'm very disappointed that we're sitting here, and please don't confuse my words right now for anger, because it is not, it's just straight passion, because I love this city. We have to do our job up here to make the right decisions. It is unfortunate what has transpired. I feel like we should never have to have somebody's character questioned and have a firing squad, but that seems like what we have had. And I'm excited, I'm disappointed on many levels, however, I'm more excited for the progress that the city is trying to make and what we are going to accomplish. We are fair and equitable, and if, we all took an oath. We decided to run for the seat, get elected, and sit here. So, I am hoping that tonight we can be productive and remember and keep in mind the progress that we are trying to make for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Oster.
Thanks, Mayor, and welcome to everybody that's in the chambers tonight. Good to see a full house, and for everybody that's watching at home. This is a big project, it has been a big project ever since I was elected in 2018, and because right now we have a lot of our staff, they're taxed, trying to keep up with the government mandate from the state of Michigan, so Phil Carwatt, our director, has now reached out to try and fill some of those gaps and tried to provide a contract with a, with a contract for, with money from this, a grant from the state for four and a half million dollars, which can really help out this project, which can also take some of that burden off our residents who are paying for this right now on their water bills, and to kind of expedite this process. So I too, like Councilman Scherzer, after the last meeting that I was in, it did kind of go off the rails a little bit. I didn't get to say some of the things I wanted to say, but I do have the confidence in our city staff that they did make the right decision. After that meeting, we all had the opportunity to see some more of the documents, and they did make the right decision based on what I have seen. I do have some concerns. The concern is with W.T. Stevens and what has went on with the City of Flint, and some of the litigation is now that is taking place in that city. I look at this as a project that happened in our city where we built a jail. The people in that neighborhood were told by the county, "No damage to your homes." There are damage to those homes that I've been in those meetings. So with W.T. Stevens and hearing the fact that people now have water in their basements due to the drilling and stuff that they did, that I have a lot of concern for that. So I want to say, like our former staff member, John Stempel, which you was talking about, we don't want to have those phone calls, we want to make sure the work is done properly and by reputable contractors. I do want to close in my statements thanking Eric Morris and Monte, and some backing from John Stempel. I think it's a great opportunity for us also to look at some more opportunity to help these builders, to get them into these contracts, so that some of the people of color, small business owners, can have those opportunities, and thank you, Jamie, for mentioning that as well. People that know me and know my background know that I don't have a racist bone in my body either. My brother-in-law is black, my nieces and nephews and great nieces are Mexican, I have a very diverse family. And so I also uplift and will fight for always people's rights and the opportunity for this city. So I too, I'm kind of sorry that we're here at this point, but I hope that we can make the right decision tonight, and also put out some opportunity to help lift some more of our citizens, with in our staff, and hopefully we can figure out some programs with here within our city as well. And thank you, John, for bringing that up, because I did forget about that program that you did for the Braddock Company. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Saginaw. You know, we are a small city. On my way here, I was getting ready, got a call from a community leader, and they said, you know, "They're talking nasty about you again." I said, "Uh, you know, God bless them." And, I'm trying to put this in a kind way. We're small enough to know that when somebody does level an accusation against one of our own, there's plenty of people to back up the fact that he is, Phil is not a racist. I like Phil plenty. I agree with him, I think ninety-seven percent of the time. The rest of the council agrees with him ninety-nine percent of the time. So, to be here for the one time that we do not and call emergency meeting does speak to the fact that we do trust him greatly. It is a remarkable experience or event when we do not, and it calls for a whole separate meeting. Yet, there are some issues that I'd like to clarify after the motion is made. I don't think those have to do with racism, I think they have to do with other issues. You know, Saginaw is a poor city. And I know that at times folks don't necessarily understand poverty in all of its angles. So, understandably, thank you so much to all of the speakers that came up to speak. I met with the Browns last Saturday, Mr. Stempel, they talked very highly of you, likewise with Phil. So the issue for myself isn't necessarily what's been brought up by some of the speakers, but more in line of how do we best function as a city? So, and make sure that we have equity. So really, that's it. Thanks so much for everyone for coming out, and it's great to see you all.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman LaMarcelia.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that is here to come in to this special meeting. I have a few things kind of lined out for my three minutes, so I probably won't be able to say them all, all, I'm sorry, because I'm going to address the first speaker. First of all, this is a new council, and I'm just speaking for me, and to come up here the way I felt like you checked, tried to check me. When I make a decision, I try to investigate, figure out what's going on, and that motion probably, that we're talking about number twenty-five, would have probably passed, maybe, I don't know if my council agree or not, but when the young lady from Brown's company came up, then of course my decision went a whole different way, because at that time it became a controversy, and I wanted to do my job that I was voted for, to look into what was going on. And now I'll get to the other part. I met with the city manager and Mr. Phil. I told him I wasn't even getting ready to deal with some of the stuff that other people came up here and dealt with. That wasn't even my agenda. I wanted to know A, B, C, D, E, and that's what we talked about. I also met with Ms. Brown, A, B, C, D, E. Okay, from those meetings, some things were not true. So it makes me wonder. I also spoke with the individual from Flint, Michigan, Ms. Gray. She can tell you, I talked to her. Was not impressed. Out of all the information I have, I would have to delete her information because of some things she said that had nothing to do with contract, and it was horrible. And today we're setting a precedent. Remember that, we're setting a precedent, because we already talked about this and the motion died. I don't hear anything new, except something I already knew, probably, I don't know Phil personally, mostly everything up here was that he's not a racist. I never thought he was. I thought he was a good-looking guy. No, I'm just kidding. It's all right to have laughing. But seriously, I, 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 I'm really perplexed. I'm very perplexed when you say that a company cannot do something. How, how do you know? How do you give them a chance? I spoke, and it was so ironic that the NAACP, they sent us a letter, and I thought it should be addressed. Is that the bail or is that something else?
That's your timer. All right.
Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank our speakers, and I, I'm different than my fellow councilwoman. John Milon, thank you. I appreciate your words, and one thing you said as far as systemic racism, and that would mean that you would be a part of that, that's the way I feel. If you're using systemic racism or calling this municipality, the people, the individuals, racist, that includes me, which is unfair, because one, I'm not a racist, and the people that I work with, whatnot, I feel the same way about. Now, do we have some? Sure, I'm not going, I don't know exactly who they are, but the thing is, for Phil, for your friends, the people in your life that have to come, I, that's embarrassing. That, not for you, but for us, that, that, that's, that we have to go through something like that. When the race card is used in a situation like this, in my mind, you have already discredited yourself. The process has already happened. We already had something to make a motion on and vote on. So what should happen at this point is that, that company move on to do like Mr. Ellison said, as far as trying to figure out how to become more qualified. Take that process, but to come and call this entity racist is the wrong way to go about it, because what you literally did is you spit in the face of the people that did the work, and now you're daring council to back you up after you just spit in their face. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. And on top of that, if it's racism, it doesn't make sense that all the calls that I've received have been from black people, who have not backed this company. So, that makes no sense to me. Not one white person or any other racist called me, it's been black people, in truth, all transparency. So, if you're going to use the race card, make sure it's legitimate racism. Make sure, don't speculate, because that's a horrible thing to tag somebody with when it's undeserving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to our public speakers for coming out tonight. I would just, I, I tend to feel, I guess, maybe the way Councilman Williams does, and I certainly appreciate the constructive ideas that have come from Mr. Ellison. And, and I think those are ideas that we, like Mr. Stempel said, are actively employing or are more than willing to look at and, and try to, try to assess the things that we're doing and make sure that we're not contributing to people not having access to opportunities. But I will die on that hill as far as Phil Carwatt and our staff and their character and their integrity. Phil has been unfairly made the face of this, similarly to the way Mr. Stempel was made the face of things, you know, during his time here. But there is a whole team of educated, talented and dedicated people who make these decisions, make these recommendations. We have gotten ample documentation. I too have received probably all the calls that my colleague referred to. And we are making a decision that is in the best interests of the City of Saginaw. It has nothing to do with personalities or, or anything else. It has to do with, on paper, what is the best decision for the citizens, citizens of Saginaw. And I'm frustrated that we're here tonight too, because we left that last meeting with four point five million dollars just in the wind, in the wind. And if we didn't act, and if our mayor didn't lead like she should and call for this meeting, we'd be just letting it hang in the wind until we got, got together and debated it at the next meeting. So, I just frustrated with the situation certainly, and I, I, I wish the best to the Browns. I absolutely, you know, it's not about quality, it's about capacity, and I just will reiterate over and over again, the people who made this decision, including Phil Carwatt, all of them are good human beings who make their decisions based on the best interests of the City of Saginaw, not their own whims, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, you're right, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll go first.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Now, we're going to talk about Phil Watts' character. Ain't nobody in here going to have any issues with Phil Carwatt, and especially me. I don't have any at all. My problem is that we need to get people in the city working. Everybody know about the crime situation that we have in the City of Saginaw. I have seen these jobs, working, people pulling lines and stuff like that, and I, and this, and the people that's working on these jobs are not reflected of the community that we live in. I have not seen two black guys on either one of these jobs, I haven't seen two Mexicans or anybody of color on either one of these jobs, and that's a problem for me. If I'm a city councilperson, I would like to see people working in the city that look like the people in the city. I personally would like to see the people that work for the city live in the city, but that's another question in itself. I mean, because soon as they open up that pipeline and people moved out to cities, then the city started dying. But you still got people to come here and work and play, and they take our resources and they drive back out of town, and that's fine and dandy. Hopefully they spend some money before they leave, but some of them don't. I mean, I come to the city council and I recognize, I see the exodus that go on in the morning and in the evening. You see the cars hitting out forty-six, east and west, north and south, M-13, both ways, you see people that's like veins, there's people running like ants, getting the hell out of Saginaw, but then they come in and took the money and took off, and then we see our inner city where it's falling apart, we don't have a good tax base right now. I mean, if I get re-elected, that's going to be the first thing I want to do, is make sure we get that tax cap lifted, because our city is dying because of that. How is it not going to help us if we don't put our kids to work in the city? How is it going to help us when we see our kids driving around, they don't see their fathers working? That don't work. So I don't have any problem with Phil Carwatt at all. I got a problem with this bid sheet. We got ten point two million dollars, ten point five, then we got four point five million. When the city first put out this bid, I think they put it out at four point five. And then they gave it to the guy that bid ten million. Was they incompetent when they put the bid out? I don't necessarily think so. But the Browns thought that maybe that was a good price, obviously. So somewhere, we got a problem here, somewhere where we need to try to be more equitable with the people in the City of Saginaw, and get them opportunity to do the job too, the people that got money invested in this city. Mr. Brown owns, I don't know how many apartment buildings, he just bought another building downtown in Saginaw for Mr. Willie, they's planning on putting thirty-nine apartments in. The guy owns a banquet hall here in the City of Saginaw, he got rental homes here in the City of Saginaw. I don't see other people's fact sheet look like that, about them investing in our city. When I look at this bid sheet, and see that we got six million.
Your time is up, Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
I thought we was at a special meeting. We got special rules today?
No, we got our same rules. I'm last. Let me say this. It's about doing the right thing. I, I heard all of the public speakers, and I thank you, but at the end of the day, my job, sitting in this chair, is to do what's best for this city. And if the other eight don't... And if the other eight don't go along, it's okay with me. I like sleeping. It's a new season. It's a new day. Mr. Exgerton, you brought up about unifying, coming together. Phil, the city manager, we've talked about that. We've talked about trying to come up with some programs. I don't want to see anybody not have anything. However, I have a responsibility. I have a responsibility to ebb all 48,000 people that live in this city to do the right thing. I pray that we do tonight. Although you did not get the information, as some said early, when you get it, you got to read it. You got to read it, because we got some crucial stuff. Now, this, to me, is simple. Fix it. Fix it. This is a real simple project for me. When it comes to the AIP dollars, are we going to go through this again? Somebody going to race card game? It's not about race. It's about what's inside. And if we more Saginaw the girl like I do, we all going to have to man and woman up. We've got to take responsibility and do the right thing. At the end of the day, I love sleeping. I love to sleep. Since that Monday meeting, my sleep patterns have sucked. Why? Because I love my city. I say it over and over again. I'm taking it back. So when I talk to the city manager, the attorney, and Phil, and any of the staff members, they'll tell you, I'm always looking for avenues to make it better. I don't want to live in a city that's not better, and neither do you. So I've got to make the right decision, and yes, I called this meeting, because we should have decided on it Monday. But because we did not, why would I wait till the 11th? So for me, I don't know the Browns. I appreciate them. But I've asked, can we do something? We can't give you a contract. That's not how this works. We hire people to do things for us. I'm not micromanaging. Madam Clerk. See, I'm real obedient, too.
Mayor, you are now at the consent agenda. We have one item on there. It's approve the contract with Rhodey Brothers Excavating Incorporated for $7,154,333 for the lead service line replacement project for the Public Services Department Engineering Division.
I need a motion to approve.
So move support.
Any questions? Any concerns? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
I'm sorry. I had a few questions.
Excuse me. Okay.
Thank you. So the extension that we just emailed this week, it's going to be on August 17th? Is that correct? Is there a new extension?
Yes, the deadline was extended to August 17th.
Okay. Has there been any extensions prior to that?
I believe multiple extensions prior to that.
When was the original submission for the...
Yeah, good evening.
Thanks, Phil.
Yeah, and I mean, I'll do my best to answer. I can't... Funding for this, the DWSRF funds, the state has them set up on what's considered quarters. And within those quarters, you got to meet certain deadlines to have the resolution approving the contractor for the project. And the timelines we had, I don't know that we were ever in quarter one funding, and I don't have that schedule in front of me. But through the time we bid it, the process to get there, first of all, to get the project put together, designed, and put out to bid, there was one or two extensions, because it just took a substantial amount of time. It's the first time we bid a project of this nature. So it was unique in that sense. But between the process of getting it bid and doing a thorough review to make sure we were making the right recommendation that we did as the last meeting, it took a substantial amount of time to... We weren't familiar with Martha Brown Builders. So as was discussed earlier, the contract has specific requirements where we have to do this vetting process, especially a project of the size, to ensure whoever's qualified to do the work. So that was a four, six, eight-week process that had us move it back another, you know, a couple of times. The fourth quarter funding had to be approved, which we were trying to hit, hopefully with the last meeting, was like July 6. We didn't know we were going to meet that. So as soon as that last meeting, that contract got denied, we asked for it to go to $4.5, which is the last, there is no more quarters after that. If we don't hit that, we've lost the funding. So I can't go back to what the original quarter and what them timelines were. I don't have that schedule in front of me. But, I mean, we've been working on this project now ever since we came to you to request the resolution to approve us to apply for the state funds, the four and a half million.
Okay. And like the Mayor Protem had said, was the original bid $4.5 billion or was it higher? The original bid, was it $4.5 or was it higher?
Martha Brown's bid was, I don't have the...
I'm sorry, the original application for the...
Well, we asked for like five point something from the state, and they approved us for $4.4 something funding.
And when was that? When was that?
They approved that, what, eight months ago, maybe a year ago? Okay, last September. Thanks, Paul. Yeah, and if I could, if I may, I just want to let everybody know, as Councilwoman Bench said, this isn't just Phil Carwatt reviewing this. When we bring this to you, and I've been doing this for 27 years, I think tonight, everybody understands my character. And if you don't know me personally, you should know who I am. And I ain't never done anything in the best interest of Phil Carwatt, neither my family, nor in my work, nor will I ever. I bring to you what's in the best interest of the city, and I would never bring you something that I wholeheartedly feel is going to fail. I wouldn't set anybody up for failure. So I just wanted to share that. But this is a team. This ain't just Phil Carwatt. This is Paul Reince, your Director of Water and Wastewater, Patrick Frazee, your Deputy Director of Water and Wastewater, Beth London, your Deputy Director of Public Works, Travis Hare, your City Engineer. I don't want to leave anybody else. Josh Hoffman, your Superintendent of Maintenance and Service, who they have put in 1,500 or 2,000 of these lines to date since the state mandated this unfunded mandate on us to replace all these lead and galvanized services from the main to the meter. His deputy or assistant superintendent, Wayne Torenberg, and two representatives of Spicer Group, of which we've contracted with to do the design and do the construction. So you have nine professional... We've sat in rooms for hours trying to find a way to make this work. What can we do? What can we do? Can we do this? I don't think we can do this, because it's now we're setting the precedence. And who do we, if we bring somebody in to train them how to do it, who do we not train now? Do we open the door for training every female business, every Hispanic business? Every, I mean, you... It's not a past practice that we have done. But trust me, when we sat in this room and we went through the reference material that the Browns provided, nowhere can I find, other than them making the statement, they ever put a water service line in. If you wanted me to get into particulars over the resolution, because I have that from Ian Flint, and if you read it, they were not contracted to do water lines in the city of Flint. They were specifically contracted to do hydroexcavating and exposure of the lines to determine what type of material the lines are made of, and then restore the area they damaged. Not tie onto the city water main, tap the main, put a double strap saddle, put a corporation stop, run it to the curb, put a curb stop, put a curb stop box, run it to the house, drill through the wall or the foundation of the basement, bring it up, tie it onto a meter, connect to the electrical outlet, put a ground wire and tie the grounding rod back. Buna Vista's reference letter said, in very generic...
Phil, I think you answered the question.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure. If I may, just... In Buna Vista, they have not put a water service line in in Buna Vista. I just...
They haven't put a service line?
Nope.
Have they put one in from the box, from the service box to the house?
Today, when I looked at that letter, I called Tori Lee, who was the city manager of, or the Township Manager of Buna Vista. And I had to be specific, because I said, Tori, within your reference letter, you state, it says, and I got it right here. I want to read it so everybody... Because it's very generic as to what the Browns have done in Buna Vista. And this is what it says, which is different from the original reference we obtained when we did our vetting process. But it says, "Please accept this reference letter from Martha Brown Builders. It was with great enthusiasm that I recommend for their services." Spoke positively of them, which I'm sure they're a great single-family residential home builder. Then she goes on to say, "The company contracted with Buna Vista Charter Township between 2019 and 2019, 2013 to 19, for necessary projects for the water department. The work performed included curb box repairs, no quantity, water lines, just comma, water lines, not installation, just water lines, removal and repairs of ash valve replacement. All services were performed in a timely and professional manner." If you have any questions, please feel free to call me. So I took it upon myself today at approximately 1:42 to call Ms. Tori and say, "Ms. Tori, I got a meeting tonight, and I need to have particulars on, you mentioned water lines within their reference letter. What can you please explain to me what you mean by that?" I said, "What I need to know is, did they ever install a water line and/or a service, anything from the main to the house or from the curb stop to the house?" And she said, "No, they have not, Phil. What they have done is made repairs." So if a water line had a leak at the curb stop, they might have..." And she didn't get into any particulars. I said, "What I really need to know is, have they ever installed a water connection or a water service in Buna Vista Township to your knowledge?" And she said, "Phil, to my knowledge, they have never done that."
Have they ever did any in Saginaw?
I don't have any information related to that. Have they ever put in, as part of building a house, whether or not they, you know, because before the state manned...
I think somebody can answer that question. She got her hand up. Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, they, since 1999, I think they've done four.
Four since 99. And that's just extensions, correct?
Those are extensions.
Because we've never allowed up until the state changed it, we were only responsible for them from the main to the curb stop box, and the homeowners were responsible from the curb stop to the house. But now that the new lead copper rule came out, and we're required to change any and all lead services or galvanized services, we're now responsible, at least for getting the new services in up to the meter.
Phil, I got only two other questions to ask, maybe. How much do it cost the city to do a line?
Everything's kind of went up in price, obviously, if you know what's happening with materials.
What have we, what's the, the last price that we paid our employees to do it? From the curb box to the house?
From the curb box to the house? I would probably, without having the numbers in front of me, just from the curb box to the house, I'd probably say for the city to do it, probably $2,000 to $3,000. Somewhere in that. Depending, like, you don't know what, some places got porches. Do you have to change where you're running the pipe into the house? But for the, to do the full-blown connection to the meter, probably somewhere around, what, $5,000 to $6,000, Josh?
Yeah, with the cost of kind of creating restoration out of the road, if you add the new tap and all that, you're looking at probably, with state's cost, probably about $5,000.
Is all the work got to be, every line that got to be changed, got to cost $5,000? Or are we just going to go from the box to the house?
No, it varies. I mean, some of them have a copper connection where the extension's only galvanized, so we just got to do the extension. This project, if you're asking specifically about this project, the way it was bid, there was 1,035 original... Lines. 408 of them were for connections and extensions, which means from the main all the way to the meter.
408.
408. 448 are connections only, which is from the main to the curb stop. And then 179 are from the curb stop to the meter. That's just the extension. That's what was bid. But because we had to reduce, we don't have the $10 million right tonight, we're recommending the post-bid addendum at 7.14. We took away 300 and some services, and the first ones of them to go are going to be the extensions only. So we're going to first work on the connections and extensions, and then whatever funds are remaining, we're going to finish on doing the connections.
And when you say connections, you're talking about from the water line all the way through?
Connection and extension is from the, a connection is from the water line to the curb stop box in the grass. And then an extension is from that curb stop box to the meter. So when I say connection and extension, it's the full pipe from the main to the house. Connection only is from the water main to the curb stop, and an extension is from the curb stop to the house.
Councilwoman Sylvia, I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. Thank you. I almost forgot my question. Well, one thing I do know is that if some of the other councilpersons would have met with Phil and Tim, they would have been able to get a lot of the information that we're asking now. But you didn't call me back, so here's my question.
Wouldn't you call me?
We, I talked to you about if there was any way to share the contract, remember? To share the contract.
Yeah, so, and I don't know what... So once you bid this, and the thing is, is you got to understand when we say "share the contract." Now, I don't know if that would mean that we recommend the approval to Rhodey Brothers and ask them if they'll subcontract.
I'll answer this question. So to me, this, when we bid a project, we bid the entire project. A contractor is bidding on that specific work. And to me, it isn't fair to that contractor to split that work up, because you have mobilization costs, you have material costs, and maybe they bid, you know, they buy bulk and they get a different price versus that. So I think if you were to split something, you would have to rebid it.
Okay, thank you.
So how many lines we got to do? How many lines we got to do for the city? How many total lines?
We got somewhere between, I think, 12,000 to 16,000. In total, there's over 30,000, including connections that are now a connection, it's still on the main, but it's not to the house, because the house isn't there. We got to take those back to the main and abandon them, because they're still considered a connection. But as far as active services, I think we're somewhere, we know for sure, probably around at least 12,000.
We're at, we'll do a little 18,000 active water lines.
Yeah, but of them, how many need to be replaced?
So the way that our program works, right now, the primary focus is replacing those that have the lead component. But everyone in the city is paying that fee. So eventually, every line is replaced when needed. So it'll be 18,000 lines, give or take. I mean, if some houses are torn down and they don't have a line anymore, they wouldn't get replaced. But eventually, every line gets replaced.
Okay, well, we had a situation where Rhodey Brothers was tearing down houses for us for a long time. They've been doing it forever. I'm just saying. I know Rhodey Brothers been tearing down houses in Saginaw for 30 years. I know that for a fact. Then we brought in Braddox Demolition. They helped tear down some houses, okay? And Rhodey's was still tearing down houses too. So hopefully, we can get to the point where the Browns could come in and do some of this work too. We got 17,000 lines. This enough of this work to split up between all the contractors.
You know, we're... If we get, our preference is to do the work ourselves. And the reason for that is because when we first looked at this project, Phil and Paul and I, and I know they worked with the other staff, when we sat down, we looked at what other cities were getting bids at, and we knew there was going to be high demand, because every city in Michigan that has lead component copper lines will have to be replaced. I think when we initially looked at it, we were somewhere in the range of, like Phil said, $2,000 to $3,000. And back then, I think some communities were paying $7,000, $8,000 a line. So if we get staffed up, then we want to replace those lines ourselves. If we never contracted another line, that'd be great for us.
So, yeah, and so what Tim's saying is, right now, we're down 50% of our employees in that division that does this work. And it isn't just the lead lines. We added that, we added that division three years ago when the state mandated it, because we know we can do it less expensive, and we know how many we got. But when the state money became available, we took it at that time to say, in order to get caught up and to stay compliant, because we got to have all these changes in 20 years from two or three years ago. So we were going to take this opportunity to get some done as part of a contract to help us while we have all these vacancies within that division.
Last question. Got a question for...
I'm going to finish up my question. I'm going to finish up my question. That's all I want to do. I got one more question. Now, Phil, if you'd have seen this sheet like I looked at this sheet, and you see that the Browns came in, removing and replacing the curb stop and the box at $600. The next, and the highest bidder had $750. And then you come down to the Rhodey Brothers, and they bid with $5,800, $5,000 more than everybody else. Don't you think the city council should be concerned about if we spend our money?
No, because if you're familiar with this process, and every bid, I've probably done, I've done probably quarter to half a billion dollars worth of contractual work. When the contractor gets those bids, they have the ability to put their dollars in any item they want. Normally, you have an item in there called mobilization. We weren't allowed to put that in this project. But a lot of times, they'll stick most of their profits in mobilization, because when you start the job, you get paid 25 or 50% of that. They get a lot of their money in there, and they can start doing what... But if you also go and look at line item number one, and I didn't have an opportunity to pull it, you can see where All Seasons Underground's got $2 million on that line, and I think Rhodey's only has $200,000. So, and if you look at Martha Brown's, I don't, you know, without having it and going through it in intricate detail, but we went through all that as part of the process, and that's another concern is their bid. We're not disqualifying based on their bid. We're disqualifying, because I have no evidence they've ever done this type of work in this volume, for sure. have no evidence they've ever done this type of work in this, in this volume, for sure, but we're, we're looking at their upside down in their bid. They cannot perform this project at four point five million dollars. I'm just, so what happens is, if you get into all the bonds, the bonding company's gonna come after everything they own, and I don't want that to happen to them. I don't want them to lose their house. I don't want them to lose their 401Ks. I don't want them to lose any assets they have when they get to where they can't perform this project at that price. It just, that's, that was all part of our, I mean, right now, they got fifty dollars a ton on asphalt, that's placed in the road. You can't buy that asphalt for sixty-seven dollars a ton today.
Okay.
I'm just, we could go through all the items in that way, but it's part of how the bids work. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Wait, Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. Do you need to rotate, and I believe Flores hasn't had a time?
Oh, Reggie.
No, Reggie.
Reggie.
And then I was gonna do Flores.
I'm sorry, okay, Reggie.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that I'm in order, I don't know, Phil, if you know that Superintendent Lee is in the audience, and I don't, is she able to speak to what he's said at all? Since he mentioned her name? I, I don't know, and that's why I'm asking.
Who? I'm sorry.
Superintendent Tori Lee from Buena Vista?
No.
Okay.
No. Do you want to go out of motion of regular business? I'll refer that to the attorney, but it's highly inappropriate.
Okay.
Councilman. LaRash.
Thank you. Just two clarifying questions from the June seventh letter that we received with the review. It said nepotism was involved in getting work from Flint. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I can't, I can't elaborate. All I can tell you is that when we received the reference, is related to Flint, we reached out to Flint, and the only individual of our knowledge that was still there that was part of this project was an individual, that's name was mentioned earlier, that gave us all the information that she had related to the project, and these were statements that she made as part of our reference checks, so-
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And then last one, when the, didn't, or, you know, the rejection of the bid letter went out from June ninth, it says, you do not have the necessary capital materials and machinery, just with materials, with that June seventh letter, and this is just for vehicles and trailers, it says, "The list of equipment appears to be sufficient for excavation and dirt, aggregated hauling work, but all the other," and this is just kind of, not quoting exactly, "but all the other work has to be contracted." So that's what you meant by this?
Yes, so they don't have the, a lot of this work is intended to be directional drilled to where it's not open excavated, so that you disturb less pavement, and it'll be less cost, and that's where WT Stevens is their proposed subcontractor, that, and if you've done any research and with what you heard tonight, that was, that's kind of where we wouldn't recommend, obviously, from what we can tell with Martha Brown, but definitely having WT Stevens as a subcontractor to do the double, to do the directional drilling as well, I mean.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Any more questions?
Phil, do you know, do you know what the Stevenson's situation is with Flint? What litigation that they have? Exactly what it is?
We're not a party to that, so-
No, I don't want to speak on it.
Okay, well, I know what it, I know what it is. It's, it's because they put, they put land on, on some property that they had, some brownfield type land, and that's what they did, they put it in a certain place, and they didn't dispose of it right. So it didn't have nothing to do with the drilling.
Yes.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'd like to call for the vote.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache.